You're good.
Okay, this is a web based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. The session is being audio recorded, please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain unmuted. Board members and staff will generally remain unmuted except when speaking or voting. Public comment will only be accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for public comment. Public comments will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. If a member of the public creates an audio or a video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the chair. When the hearing opens, you may give your comments in the following manner. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom and wait to be called. Before the hearing closes, we will ask for any new comments for people who are only able to join by phone or unable to use the raise hand feature. If multiple people attempt to speak at one, staff will help moderate. State your name and your address for the record. If multiple people wish to speak, the meeting moderator will call on you individually. Please listen for instructions. We appreciate, we appreciate your attendance at this meeting. If you have any questions about the process, you may call our staff at eight six zero four 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 eight five eight one three. After the meeting has ended. Okay, call the order appointment of all today's. Do we need any alternates today?
I think we might need to, one, two, three. Warren, are you on? Oh, yeah, there you are, sorry. Sea of faces. We've got all our regulars, so no.
Okay.
But we will have Don reroll.
What's that?
No, keep going.
Yeah, I have it open in the meeting, right? The zoning board of appeals, public meeting of the town of Waterford is now in session this twenty seventh day of October, two thousand twenty one at six thirty P M. All decisions of the board are final in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes section eight A B. Any person aggrieved by any decision of the board may take an appeal to the superior court. The appeal shall be commenced in accordance with section eight dash eight F and G within fifteen days of the date. And also the decision was published as required by general statutes. The zoning board appeals recording secretary will now take role.
Joshua Friedman.
Here.
Catherine Newman.
Here.
Michelle Crips.
Michelle, can you unmute yourself and say here, please?
Michelle Crips.
Let's hear.
Yeah, I got it.
Warren McKenzie.
President.
Ann Darling.
Ann Darling.
Here.
Danielle McCarty. Jason Mariaski.
Here.
Darcy Van Ness. Absent. Absent.
Thank you, Don.
Ready, approval of the meeting minutes? Are there any corrections to be submitted?
No.
The minute?
I, I would like to make a comment. In listening to the video, you made a motion last month to accept the minutes, but the date of the minutes you were accepting was never put into that motion. And I don't know if that makes a difference or not. It might have been. You're making a motion to accept minutes, which probably was from August, but it never states what month it was, so I don't know if you need to correct that.
I, I don't believe that we do.
Okay, thank you.
If there are corrections, then say the note, if the note correction, the minutes are approved, just corrected.
Motion and then have a vote.
Yeah, so.
Make that motion.
I second it.
Then further discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Application reviews, applications number Z B A twenty one dash six appeals of Mihak Realty LLC owner and applicant Tristan Wallace, Laurie, LaRriereO Engineering Associates Incorporated, agent at one eighteen Boston Post Road, Boston Road, C G Zone. Variants requested from the zoning regulations eight point four point one, front yard setback seventy three foot reduction from seventy five to two, two foot minimum for proposed canopy. Eight point four point one, front yard setback eleven foot reduction from seventy five to sixty four feet minimum for proposed building. Eight point four point two, side yard setback twenty three foot reduction from thirty feet to seven feet minimum. Eight point four point three, rear yard setback forty five feet reduction from fifty to five feet minimum. Twenty point three parking spaces, three space reduction from nineteen to sixteen spaces. Twenty point eight B, distance of parking along access drives, eleven foot reduction from forty feet to twenty nine minimum to the street line. Twenty point one seven one B. Landscaping of parking areas varies from requirement that the five foot side buffer be landscaped existing side yard occupied to a budding properties drive. Variants are requested to develop the site in accordance with the basic industry practices to provide parking landscaping. Another proof is shown in the plan entitled, entitled variance plan, convenience store and fueling station additions. One eighteen Boston Post Road, Waterford, Connecticut, prepared by Mihak Realty LLC dated July sixteenth, two thousand twenty one. Okay, hearings open?
This isn't a hearing, we're just making a decision, so.
Oh, we're making a decision, okay.
Or discussion.
All right.
I do have one question before we start. I see Zachary Cole, is it Cole Law Firm? Could he, could we have some identification?
Uh, yeah, hi, I'm Zachary Cole, I'm from the Cole Law Firm and I represent Mihak Realty.
Thank you.
I'm their attorney. The engineer who spoke at the last meeting wasn't available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. So, before we have a discussion, is there any, any particular motion anybody wants to make? Or would we want to have a discussion first? What are we doing here? Has everybody reviewed this? We have no, nobody has anything to say? Can you, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Um, I mean, I can start, I mean, I gotta get back to the page where, you know, the plan is, I don't know, we have a plan on board, but this is a lot of, I guess I'll speak before we make a motion, but there's, there's a lot of, they're asking for a lot of variances here. I don't know how many there is altogether here, I'm just, I didn't count them, but let me see here.
I believe there's seven, that's correct.
Right, seven. It is, it is a very small.
Screen, I don't know if that helps you.
What is, what is, I mean, we could have a discussion of what, what, what is the claim hardship? Where is that? Was written out here somewhere, I gotta, I gotta get another email. Zoom meetings are difficult for me without paper, so.
I got it here, give me one second.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, so this is it. Help yourself a gas station. Yeah. So it was developed as a gas station and now they want to make it a gas station in a convenience store.
I believe they have a convenience store, a smaller one there.
They do.
If I'm, okay, um, so it's, looks like they want to, um, add on to, I'm sorry, Josh, should I?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Well. That's what I was getting, the point I was getting to is the, they're expanding the use of the property by enlarging the convenience store. This seems like they, they have a nonconforming use, which is, they're entitled to, I suppose, but they're also asking for the canopy. The canopy is new industry standards, I guess, so that encroaches on some of the variances.
It's not the use that's nonconforming, it's the configuration of the site.
Right, right, they, they're allowed to do the gas station and the, and, and the convenience store, that's not, but it, so that's you, that use is allowed, it's that they're expanding it and some of it is what they call industry standards. I mean, I don't think there's, there's not, there's listed zero parking spaces now on that, on that lot, is that right?
That is right, there's no affinal parking delineated on that site.
Right, so in that way, they're, they're coming up to standards in some way to do that, but it's that, that's allowing, I think, the setbacks are mainly about the buildings and the canopy, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to lay this out because nobody's having any comments on this and I'm just trying to figure out.
Right now, they have, they have the ability to drive around the building. And if they did this, that would be taken away. I like the fact that they're planning for parking, but they're also taking away that accessibility of the building itself.
You're showing the existing print, plot plan. And can you show the other one just quickly, the?
Absolutely. Sorry.
So.
That's not. Seriously. Oh. It's in there twice.
Yeah, okay.
So I have a question. If there's no parking available, the only way to use the little store is if they go into a spot as if they're going to fill up gas and then they can go in. There's no other parking available, is that?
Yeah.
Reading it?
So technically, there are parking spaces, we account the parking spaces at the pump, so people can fill up and then leave their vehicles and go. I believe they also park off to the side over here occasionally, you see parking along this section.
And over on the other side, they park on the other side as well. But it's not, it's not mapped out as such.
Right. And so.
Lines on the ground showing where people could pull in if they wanted to, or is that?
Yeah, they're, they're plotted on the plan there. You can see the parking spaces on the left and the right. There's three there, which is there and there's four, five, four there, plus there's what, eight on the, at the pumps? So you've got three and one, two, three, four, that's seven and eight, where's the, where's the other one?
There's four right here, four.
Four, okay, there's four there, okay, okay, there's four there, so there's four and four, that makes sixteen.
Yeah.
I mean, that's an improvement to the lot. The setbacks, I guess, are, are, none of the setbacks are conforming. I mean, putting the canopy up, I don't know what this, are there, are there regulations for gas stations to have canopies? What is that?
I, I think that would have been a question we could have asked during the public hearing.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So. I mean. Do what?
You, you have to decide if they, if they have met the bar for illegal hardship in order to grant these variances, that's what you guys have to do.
So would you, I mean, we can grant some and not others, I mean, that's a, that is a possibility. They're, maybe they're overstepping the size of it and pushing the envelope of variances and like the zero, zero clearance at the back of the building right now, this design. And the setbacks are, I can't really, this is.
Let's zoom, I'll zoom you into the backside of the building. They're proposing a five foot setback on the side.
Right.
And this is a seven foot minimum setback here, but this is all curved and paved for the parcel next door. So they don't want to landscape any of that.
Right, right.
But they are proposing to landscaping here. But the actual setback, you know, we have in this zone, these are our parameters.
Right, okay, so. To me.
I have a question.
There's two, yeah.
And I know we cannot go back into the public hearing, but my question is, I, and I did watch the video. A statement was made that I guess Aldi's wrote a letter, they're one of the neighbors. But are we privy now to know what Aldi said? I, I don't, I don't.
Not, we did not receive a letter from Aldi's, there was a discussion about when Aldi's was built, but we did not receive any communication.
Oh, all right, okay.
Um, it would have been in, in the exhibit.
Um, I want to just clarify something. The frontage went from seventy five feet to two feet, is that correct?
Because the canopy over the gas pumps is considered the structure. So it's two feet off the, the line.
It's a state road line, basically.
Well, I, I just wanted to, I mean, that's not too much buffer there.
Right.
So. Um, I have, when we get to this, I have my feelings on what I'd like to see. Don, my, my thoughts were, um, let's say you got, you have, go ahead.
You got, you gotta determine the hardship, can we go back to that again? Sorry.
Yep, just give me a moment.
Is there a hardship here? And then if there is, then how much do we, how much variance do we allow? Is that pretty much where we're going here?
Yep, you have to make, you have to determine whether or not they meet the bar. And then you can make a determination on variances and any conditions or anything that you would like to put on this application.
This statement under number ten is their statement?
This is their statement.
I'm, I'm asking questions that I kind of know the answer to, I'm just asking the questions out loud to, for the board. So it does not conform to current area parking loading, right? Represents layout such facilities. So this predate, this place predated the zoning in the area?
No.
This, it was nonconforming, it was built as nonconforming, or?
Uh, I don't have all of the history of the parcel, that's something that we should maybe have talked about at the public hearing also.
Right.
Really introduce any new information at this point.
Right.
So my comment here in their hardship is that, um, this, their sentence here about the project is requested variances are the minimum necessary to redevelop the site. So, um, that's one thing that I think is important because, um, they don't have to redevelop the site, that's not a hardship, um, in my mind.
Right, it's operating now.
Right.
That's, yeah. That would be, that would be my, you know, that's, that's the core of it right there, I would say, it's like projects request minimum, minimum standards, are these safety standards? And we didn't, you know, they don't, they don't spell any of that out required by the state, I think I did ask those questions in the meeting, so. Does anybody want to make a motion, have any questions, any thoughts on that, what Kathy just said, or?
Um, I'd like to ask a question, when can we, do we have to vote on the whole package? Or do we vote on each individual, what their variance? Does the whole thing have to go as one?
Well, the, the first thing we're trying to determine is if there's a hardship.
I understand that, I understand.
So if we don't think there's a hardship, then we don't give any variances, from my understanding.
That's correct. You can make conditions and adjustments if you determine that they've met the hardship requirement for what they're asking for. So for example, you didn't like one of the variances or didn't think that was appropriate or whatever. You can make a change to it or you can condition it.
I'm, I'm sorry to belabor this, but can you, can you bring up the conditions of a hardship that you published the notes, I think?
My, my memo?
Yeah.
Yep, just a moment.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, hello, good evening again, for the record, attorney Jeffrey Lund, again, I don't know how far away I am from the microphone, so hopefully you can hear me easy enough. Um, I just want to expand upon one statement that was made as far as finding of a hardship. There is case law in Connecticut that does say that an independent grounds for granting a variance is if you are lessening or reducing a nonconformity. So in those situations, you do not have to make a finding of a hardship. For example, if we were to just remove one of the variance requests from the others, the one regarding parking. Currently, there is no parking that is recognized on this site. Nineteen spaces are required under the zoning regulations. Proposing sixteen parking spaces is lessening the nonconformity. Going from zero to sixteen doesn't get you all the way there, but it is lessening the nonconformity. So in that scenario, looking at that one in a vacuum, you could approve that solely on the basis of the fact that a nonconformity is being reduced. You would not have to make, reach the conclusion that there was a hardship related to why they couldn't get to nineteen spaces. Similarly, if you were to take it in a, in a vacuum, the setback for the building, not the canopy, which is two feet off the, the, the front property line, but the building that exists now is just under fifty two feet from the front yard and they are proposing sixty four feet. So they are lessening and reducing that nonconformity, not all the way to seventy five feet, but they're making it less. So in that situation for that one, you could also make a finding independent of a hardship requirement that with the reduction of the nonconformity from fifty two to sixty four that they're entitled to, that, or not entitled to, but that it's an appropriate granting of a variance to reduce that nonconformity. So just some things to keep about, to keep in mind. You also don't have to look at this necessarily in a vacuum on each individual one. If you looked at this from the totality of the development and determined that what is being proposed essentially reduces the nonconformities that presently exist on the site. That could be grounds for granting of the variances in the application. And I should say, just for the record, while I wasn't at the last meeting, attorney Vina was here. In the interim, I have reviewed all the documentation and the record and listened to the audio from your last meeting. And I don't know if I muddied the waters or made them clearer. If there are any questions on that, let me know.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, what you said about the reducing the, the setback in the front, but you're also increasing it by doing that, increasing it in the rear, so.
Sure, yeah.
That, and you know, what's important here, I don't know, you know, that's not for us to decide, I guess, but.
No, and that, and that's the balancing act and the, and the, and the analysis that you get paid the big bucks to make.
Right, so, I mean, this is, this is not an easy situation, there's a lot going on here and there's a lot. You have a building, you have a canopy, I mean, the canopy, if you want to break it down, I mean, I, I think we have to, it's gonna take a while to do this, but to break it down, the canopy is two feet from the state boundary, the road boundary. There are gas stations around here that have no canopies. Is it, is it required that it's something they want and makes it better for their customers? But is it, is that a hardship? For, for, you know, to grant that two foot? I don't know. Doesn't seem like it's a hardship. So, I mean. Yeah, I gotta, I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at this. Does anybody got any comments on that? I mean, just on, on the canopy itself? Do we want? I guess I'm gonna say, my, my feeling is we should make a motion to, to accept this thing without, with exceptions, because they, they want to leave it the way it is, and they, they have the gas station the way it is, no parking. I don't know what the safety regulations are for what, what they're doing, but it seems like they're trying to do an improvement, but it's over.
Well, if I can, if I can add my, my two cents to this, at no point.
I wasn't finished, hold on. And that's, you want to add? After, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have this raise your hand feature, but. So I guess our goal is they're, they're allowed to improve their property, but they're, they're, they're increasing the, they're increasing the nonconformity. So can it be reduced and still do what they want, some of the things they want? Or is there no hardship at all and, and leave it as it is? So. Somebody wanted to speak, I, I'm sorry, I don't have everybody's picture up on this.
It was Warren.
Wait, was, wait, Warren?
Warren.
Warren, you had something to say?
No, it's fine.
Um, I do, I do have a problem. I, I've looked at the site and I think it works fine. Um, I do have a problem with the awning over the pumps being that, so being that close to the road. Um, and there, I just think possibly, not possibly, I would like to see them go back and maybe redesign this, where this, oh, this awning or make it smaller, I, I don't know, the specs, are there specs that? What?
No, I was just saying, I don't know that they could do that, I mean, that, where the pumps are, I don't think they're moving, they're not reconfiguring the pumps at all, they're going.
I understand that, I understand that.
Yeah, so. They can do it without the awning altogether, right? That, that would be, I'm sorry, go ahead, if you want to continue.
There's something that, I, I mean, I'm just not happy with this design plan. Um, so, um, I don't know what the others feel like.
Are you, you're not happy because it's too nonconforming, it's asking for too many variances, or you just, what do you, are you stating?
For everything, um, what really bothers me is that they, I don't understand this awning business. I, I personally don't, would want not to see that, that close to the line. You know, and I think of these extraneous uh, situations where you're real close to that property line. What if a big truck, I don't know, misses or goes over to the, veers to the right and knocks that, um, canopy down?
Yeah, that's not, that's not our issue at this point, we can't, we can't really, that's not, that's not something we're deciding. What we're deciding on is the setbacks of the lines and where they want, where they want to put structures, that's, we really can't determine that.
Well, that's what I have to say, I, go ahead, anyone else there?
My, my comment is that, um, I think that they have, um, increased some of the nonconformities so much that it just doesn't, doesn't seem right, you know, I. Right, you know, I, our goal is to try and decrease some of the non-conformities. And they're putting it five feet off of the, the back property line. I think that they could come up with a better plan.
Yeah, I do too.
I don't like the plan that they have presented.
Yeah, I mean, the building could, the building could, the setbacks could be the same on the side in the back as it exists now, that wouldn't, wouldn't be increasing it. Wouldn't be as big a building, but it wouldn't be, wouldn't be increasing it.
They could, they could turn the building, keep the, the, um, conformities. The non-conformity is the same and not increase them.
Right.
And they would still have a bigger building than what they have now. Um.
Yeah.
So if they shrink the size of the building that they're proposing. That maybe would make more room for everything to be moved back and allow the canopy, um, not so close to the property line in the front.
So I think the can, the canopy is based on where the pumps are right now. And the overhangs, the canopy's there for, I, 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 my, what I see, when I look at a canopy, it's got lighting in it. It's got, uh, fire suppression in it, uh, and it covers the pumps so you stay dry when you're pumping the gas in the rain or the snow. That's what they're there for, I think, and lighting. Um, so without that, they have other, they have to do, do things differently for, to meet regulations, I assume. But that's really not for us to determine again, it's, we're determining the setbacks and the variances and the non-conformities and. Hardships, so. We're not in this for design, we're in this for determining the legal positions of what they're trying to do. So does anybody have a motion, does anyone want to make a motion? I'll make, I'll make a motion to, um.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, sorry, Jeffrey Lund, can I?
Yes.
As, as you're coming up on making a motion, I would say, uh, just based upon some of the comments that I've heard, um. Uh, if there was a, uh, desire to leave, uh, some flexibility. For the applicant to maybe come in, uh, with, uh, some alternative plans, uh, maybe lessening some of the, uh. Variances that are being asked, um, what I would recommend is that any motion that you make. If you make a motion to, um, uh, grant, deny the application, uh, that the motion is made. Uh, without prejudice, uh, that would permit the applicant to come in. Hypothetically tomorrow with a new plan, uh, but they would not have to wait. Uh, uh, the, the statutory requirements that talk about upwards of six months sometimes for. Uh, application to come in, that's similarly situated to one that you've already looked at. So, uh, just wanted to throw that out there before any motions were made, that, um, without prejudice.
Right.
The applicant to come in with modified plans sooner rather than later.
I would agree with that, I was, no, I didn't know the exact wording of that, but that would be what I would, I would, if I were making the motion, I would do that. So, if, does anybody here want to make a motion, or you want me to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the application without prejudice.
Is there any further discussion on that?
We need a second. Second.
Oh, a second, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion? Say aye, aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's it. Okay. Um, I gotta get back to the agenda here.
So I, I do have a question, now that that's been denied, will we send it back to the, um, people who've proposed? This motion and they can then come up with another one?
Well, the attorney's here, he's heard it, so he, he's, he's gonna report back.
Uh, we will issue, yeah, we will issue, um, a decision and provide it to the applicant. The town will do, take care of that for you.
Okay.
And, and just stating the obvious for the record, if the applicant wishes to appeal this denial to Superior Court. They have the right to do that, they have to do it within fifteen days of your decision being published in the newspaper. Um, but, uh, that, that's not something we can control. Um, but, uh, but to answer the initial question, yes, staff will be sending out a notice of decision to the applicant. Uh, and then those procedural timelines will start ticking.
Okay.
Okay. I'm trying to find my scripting in here.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, I'm just trying to find my scripted on my phone.
Our, our next topic would be old business.
Yeah.
Which we had nothing on the agenda.
Right.
This is a special meeting, we cannot discuss anything other than what's on the agenda.
Right, oh, here it is, right here, okay, sorry. Um, old business, okay, any new business review, uh, approval, annual report?
So you should have been provided in your emails, a copy of the annual report. It just summarizes, um, the activity of the board last year, how many applications we heard. How many times we met and the spending of the board as opposed to the, the fees that were collected.
Ready?
Make a motion to approve the annual report.
Have a second? Uh, is there any discussion, anybody have any corrections or questions or? Okay. Um, all those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Annual report? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Um, correspondence? Nothing coming up, okay?
We have a meeting for November.
No, we'll be meeting December first.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I'm, I'm, I've been on the board, I think, sixteen years, I think it is, hasn't it been like four terms or something, you know, Joe?
I, yeah, I think that's right, Josh.
Yeah, so I've enjoyed it, but I decided not to, uh, run again, so. Good luck to everybody and hope to stay with public service.
We'll miss you.
So, um, we're gonna call it adjournment. Motion to.
Make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, take care, everyone.